Yeah.
So what am I do, what is this?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now five thirty. And I will call this a regular work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. And we welcome all of you to our meeting this evening. And this is a work session, so it's very informal. And we'll go right to agenda items. But we want you to know that everyone is welcome. And those who want to participate in our meeting virtually, please go to burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or you can view our meetings on Comcast Channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. This evening, Councilmember Schultz is not feeling well, but she's present with us remotely. So if, when she doesn't, when she needs to take time because she's not feeling well, she can do that. It's good to see you. We can see you, Kara. So people can join us on Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. And more information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. So this is a work session, and we go directly to the items in our agenda. And the first item is the resolution of support for the suburban transit provider. And Mr. Winder of MBTA, he is the CEO of MBTA, and he's presenting this evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Luther, and thank you for being with us. And the floor is yours.
All right. I want to thank you for your time this evening. Hopefully, take too much of your time. That depends on questions, though.
Now, you're going to have to use your outside voice so everybody can hear you because the microphones are for broadcast.
Got you. All right. Well, let me pull this back then and then speak a little bit louder. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Luther Winder, CEO for Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. And I'm here to talk about the resolution for support for suburban transit providers. Did my introduction already. My eyesight is not that good, so I'm going to use my hand out here. Want to do an overview of talking about ridership first because I want to lay the land of what MBTA provides currently for the city of Burnsville, as well as just at the end, I'll give a brief update about what we do overall. Our overall system of ridership is about seven percent this year. In September of twenty twenty-five, which is, so I feel like we're, most is really packed, really going fast. The years probably going by pretty quick. Just last month, we had our highest ridership month since February of twenty twenty, so that's since the pandemic. Our MBTA Connect Ridership, year-to-date is up thirty-six percent. State Fair Ridership was up seventeen percent from twenty twenty-four. And Renaissance Festival Ridership was up eight percent from twenty twenty-four. It's important to note that when you look at State Fair as well as Ren Fest, both of those special event services that we have have a significant parking lot presence at Burnsville Transit Station. We talk about the twenty twenty-five, just to give an idea of some of the services and some of the events that we have helped provide service to. And I think that's one thing always to note when it comes to suburban providers and local service as a whole. When you'd have the ability to have a provider in your backyard, and theoretically, we really are in your backyard, really, right down the street, you do have access and ability to get services provided that some cities may not have that option of, to have. First one, just want to highlight, we did the Mobility Matters NLC event. That was this past March. That was well-intended. That MBTA played an integral role in planning and executing the League of, National League of Cities Mobility Matters event. It brought together leaders from across the South Metro and beyond to discuss how collaboration at federal, state, and local levels can bridge mobility gaps and improve access to transportation for all. And as you see in that picture up top, you may recognize a certain council member here, Councilman McKeeley, who also spearheaded that event. And we were happy to provide, happy to provide service as well as provide support. When it comes to the Burnsville Festival, this past, we had a seven percent increase in ridership from year-to-date, as well as we're looking to continue to have different, additional participation in festivals moving forward. We also just did, not too long ago, a Burnsville Parks Tour, which I didn't get invited to. I might, I would ask for an invite next time. Let my staff know about that one. Where they did a bus tour to Parks and Natural Resources Commission's annual tour for Burnsville. Some additional outreach and partnership highlights, and I just want to say I don't do it alone. I have, I have a great team, and I think many of you have met, if you have not had the chance to meet Julia, who spearheads our outreach. She has an amazing job of continuing to have outreach for this city, as long as six others in what we serve, as well as continuing to put different avenues and different events on my calendar and account as a whole for us to continue to expand our partnerships. We did partner with Buck Hill to launch new service and cross-marketing opportunities. We have started our conversations for how we're going to serve them for this season. Looking to start the service a little earlier, as well as extend it a few weeks later than this past year. We will maybe reach out and have some conversations. We are starting to, the mall is under, is under new ownership, so there will be some conversations about how we can continue to use the mall for parking in order to serve, to serve, to serve Buck Hill. But that's at a later date. Can be involved in participating events such as the Party on the Plaza, the Burnsville Parade, Burnsville Public Works Event, Burnsville Juneteenth, as well as Burnfield SWAT Training. And also, let's not also round it out when you talk about our youth and education outreach. That's really been something we've really, this past couple of years, have really put a big focus on. We do understand that when we look at our high school, as well as the UDM students that we serve today, they are riders of the future. So we partnered with Virgil High School and the Virgil Chamber of Commerce to train students on using MBTA Connect for off-site internships, as well as to provide go-to cars for travel. It's important to note that when individuals see our Connect buses out prior to that training and outreach we've done, they assume those buses were for elderly and for disabled individuals. The general public didn't understand, especially students, that they could utilize an app, which, you know, kids love apps. And obviously, add and book a trip just like they were in Uber and left to go to school, as well as to go to internships. That's been very, that's for us as increasing ridership, as well as awareness, as well as supporting hands-on learning by welcoming student interns to maintenance team at our Burnsville Bus Garage. Now, when we think about microtransit and we look at some of our served, non-MVTA-served cities around us, like maybe the city of Bloomington, they're just now getting some microtransit, but they don't have full city coverage like we've had in Burnsville until you started service back here in twenty nineteen. Do you want to know how to service and outreach? And just want to have some, just want to highlight what some of our customers are saying. So high rider satisfaction, services praised as clean, comfortable, affordable, safe, stress-free compared to driving and parking, which more people would start taking the buses again because we're starting to see that traffic on thirty-five W is, it's getting up there. Also to staff and drivers, it's always one of our, it's always one of hallmarks of service. Riders constantly describe staff as friendly, professional, attentive, and accessible, accessibility to needs, attentive accessibility to needs. Driver experience, drivers recognize as safe and personable. Many describe the service as an integral part of their event experience. It's important to note that when I have conversations with our contractors across the whole, we're firmly told that we have some of the highest standards of any contract that they have in any region. And we pride ourselves on that, and based on point, we do see that feedback when it comes to our customers as well. Just want to talk about what our, we just did a commuter survey as well, too. And some of the things we got from our commuter survey was it reduces driving stress, saves money, provides time to relax and work, and is faster and more convenient. When we look at that and think about MBTA, or sorry, or look at Southwest, or some of our Plymouth, McGrove, we do have express service. We have invested back in that mode type. We do see there's a lag in that in the region as a whole. We do feel our goal for twenty twenty-six is to have service in all of our parking lots. Currently, right now, we don't have service in two of our parking lots, Eagle Creek, as well as one fifty-seven, not in this service area, but not in this city, but in our surroundings. Our goal is to make sure we have full service in those moving into twenty twenty-six. I don't know if you'll have that same experience if you were to talk to some of our other cities with their parking lots, if you'll see utilization for them in twenty twenty-six or beyond. That's also a benefit of MBTA. Again, I'll talk about high rider satisfaction. We won't go back and again. Timing and flexibilities. Riders want more all-day options, early mornings and midday evenings. That is something that we're continuing to look at, as well as strive to invest in. But it's something that when we have these conversations, and I'll obviously open this up in a few minutes to any questions you guys have, we try to be responsive to that. That's also one of the hallmarks of having local service, that as you talk, my job is to listen, and then to go back and try to implement. Now, one of the things we continue to look at, a hallmark of our service, directness of our service. We've got some high marks for that, as well as when it came to MBTA Connect, riders expressed they'd like to see expanded MBTA Connect coverage. And that is something we are going to continue to do. We do have, we, we put together a five-year, we have a five-year plan. And in that plan, one of the things we looked at for the city of Burnsville was to continue to expand our Connect service and look at, hopefully by twenty twenty-seven, the latest, to make Burnsville our central connection point between our, right now, currently, our Eagan residents can't leave the city of Eagan. And we have, obviously, our individuals in Scott County and Prior Lake and Shakopee, they kind of stay within that zone and a little crossing the Savage. Based on how we've been evaluating the service, we believe our Burnsville Transit Station is a primary, is a primary, should be a turning crossing point for all of our Connect service. And moving forward, look to split into two zones, what that converges being in Burnsville, being in Burnsville. But that will also cause for an increase in resources. We talk about the resolution just as a whole. Why now? There's been recent policy discussions have raised concerns about suburban transit authority and flexibility. It's important to note that the same, this, I wasn't here in nine, in the mid-nineties. Some in this room were, and I will deviate to those individuals to speak to that. I've only heard stories. But I, what I can tell you is now, what I from understanding and research, that suburban providers were, suburban communities were paying in the service and weren't receiving their fair share of service. They had very limited options when it came to express service, as well as local services nonexistent. When you look at what MBTA has provided, and continues to provide, and then you look at some of the same critiques that certain cities around us make, those things are still true, were true then, and are still true today. The only difference is you have suburban providers serving twelve cities and providing good service to them. So what we're, what we're looking to do is, obviously, we have a track record for innovation, whether it comes to MBTA Connect and microtransit. It's important to note that microtransit was first started by Southwest. It was implemented in Minnesota Valley, a little different iteration in twenty nineteen. And the region's now just starting to put that in other cities as, as of a couple of years ago. When you look at the EGS fleet, the, the electric cutaways that we have operating now, we're the only, only system in the region, some, one of the only systems, obviously, in the Midwest that operates that particular, that particular bus type, that has an electric cutaway, something we're proud of, continuing to do. Not just when we talk about, also commuters, computer buses, and our Wi, and the Wi-Fi. Minnesota Valley and suburban values were the first brought Wi-Fi on buses. That didn't come to, that didn't come to Met Transit in the region. That came in my tenure. I remember a few years ago, then obviously adding Wi-Fi. So we've continued to be an innovation lab. We have our, our sister property, Southwest is now piloting autonomous vehicles, autonomous vehicle pilot with Main Mobility. So when we think about the things that were responsive, not only do we provide those event services, but we also look at our communities, have the dialogue, have the conversations, and make sure we put different service types that meet the needs. As that innovation lab happens, as we have success, that is adopted among the whole region. So when it comes to governance, we want to continue to ensure strong local representation and investment by giving suburbs direct voice in transit planning. It's important to note that we have many conversations with all of our member cities, especially the city of Burnsville, about what's needed and what we can do as far as adding additional services or even modifying services. You don't have that same dynamic in other, with other cities' impact when it comes to sometimes larger organizations. Simply not, you can't be responsive to everyone. The larger you get, the less responsive you are to, to individual needs. That's just the nature of some, that's just the nature of sometimes when you grow. We don't have that, and we, suburban riders continue to kind of stay at that touch point, that touchstone for communication. Also, local collaboration when it comes to festivals and co-sponsorships. We believe that's also a hallmark of what you get when you do have local, when you do have local service. This particular time, I will turn it over. You guys have this, have seen this. It's important to note that this is a template that's went out to all the cities. Some cities did mod, did, did adopt this as, as written. Others did make some, some modifications. Our goal is really to show, to have this for, to have all cities within our, within our service area and with all, with all STA, really look to resolution for support because we want to make sure our elected understand that what was true then is still true today, that local service matters, it's needed, and obviously, want to continue not only to, not only to invest in it, but also support it moving forward. So at this time, I'll turn it over to any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you so much. And first, I want to congratulate you and your team on winning the Management Innovation Award. So thank you for all of those, the good work that you do. Members of the council, you have questions? Yes, Councilmember Gustafson?
I probably have three questions. Number one is, what policy discussions are happening that is causing concern?
In a nutshell, there are certain legislation that have had some communication related to whether a bill would come out to eliminate suburban providers. Two things that we've heard, one being elimination of suburban providers, as well as the county sales tax also, to taking away the county transit sales tax and taking, moving also, moving that under the council as well, too. So those are the two things, those are the two big items. But we're folk, I don't, kind of sales tax does not mean I'm suburban. That's why we're having this conversation.
The other question was, you said something about Eagan residents couldn't leave Eagan? Is that with your?
Not on Connect service, so.
On the connect?
Yeah.
They can't leave Eagan. But we can go to Eagan.
Yes, you can. Yeah. Yes, you can go to Eagan.
So we can go from Burnsville, but they can't come here?
No. I have a commissioner that says, why would you want to leave Eagan?
Gary is really passionate.
It's a very interesting city separated by the river. So when we invested services, we kind of kept that as the main zone, as their own zone. And they do have the ability to connect in from Cedar Grove and get on a, get on, obviously, then take another Connect bus in Burnsville and surrounding. But we want to make sure we kind of formalize that in the future.
Okay. Just trying to figure out.
Did you have a third question?
Doesn't flow.
Yeah.
Yeah. You had a third question?
No, that was actually the first question. I made it one question by adding, and what are the concerns?
Okay. Anybody have a question? Councilmember McKeeley?
Well, as the board chair of the MBTA, for the last two years, I'll be ending my term as chair at the end of this year. It's a pleasure to work with Luther. This, we make assumptions sometimes that our cities support us, but we haven't necessarily had to deal with potential legislation that might take us back to the nineteen eighties when suburbs got horrible service, but yet paid into the taxing district. And so we believe, we've heard, actually, there are suburbs served by the greater Met Transit region that are very unhappy with the service that they have getting. So it has shades of the eighties coming back. So I find it interesting that there would even be a consideration of, of a bill to eliminate the suburban transit providers. So we want to make sure that we have full support from all our cities and communities and our legislative representatives. In the past, they've been vehement supporters. We've had many legislators and senators, House and Senate, who have been tireless advocates of supporting suburban transit providers, especially MBTA, because MBTA is the second largest transit provider in the state, along with Duluth, behind Met Transit. But it is sort of a, you know, Met Transit is giant. We are much smaller than that, but we, you know, our, our surveys and our customer feedback speaks for itself. We provide outstanding service, and so we want to continue to do that. We also want to continue to be able to find the funding necessary to do that because our populations are growing year over year and continue to grow. The inner core isn't exactly growing, it's shrinking in many ways, and their service, actually, the last report at I thirty-five Solutions, a couple of months back, said that Met Transit service was seven percent down. You heard, our service is seven percent up, so we're, we're going in a very positive direction. They're dealing with some contraction and how to deal with that contraction. In fairness to Met Transit, they've got soft service in several areas, but the key one that is driving most of that seven percent was the elimination of the North Star and some service reductions on their light rail. Light rail has, as everyone knows, has suffered some public relations challenges with some of the crime and things in the inner city. They're working very hard to clean it up, but there's an understandable drop in, in ridership to some degree for that. But we and they hope, because we want a healthy system, we want to be a part of a healthy system metro-wide. So we hope that they're able to turn that around and start to grow that again and provide the kind of service that we provide in the suburbs. But for us, we're growing seven cities. Our population isn't shrinking, even in Burnsville, a very mature city with no area to build out. We're going up and adding population. And so we want to make sure that we can continue to expand MBTA Connect. Micro, microtransit has exploded in growth, and I think we, around the country, I, at NLC events, I speak quite a bit about microtransit. I've presented microtransit at a national organization earlier, late last year, actually, a year ago this month. And so it, it is something that needs funding. It doesn't just happen. It has to be incremental funding because it can't take from our fixed routes, our express into downtowns, or our suburb-to-suburb service. It is all new ad, and it's adding a tremendous amount of new guests that have never used public transit before are coming in through the MBTA Connect channel. So important for us to support all these things. Anyway, I wanted to thank Luther. He's been great the last eight years he's been with MBTA. The organization has grown dramatically. Our services, the dynamics of our services has, is nothing like it was eight years ago when he took over. Certainly, post-COVID and microtransit has expanded that. But we've had a lot of expansion in suburb-to-suburb from where we were when I started on that board in twenty-ten. It was basically eighty percent express service in downtown and a couple of east-west buses. It is quite the opposite now. So a very different organization today than it was fifteen years ago. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Members of the council, one of the things that I'm proud of is that Burnsville was founding member of MBTA in nineteen ninety. And this legislation came into, was promulgated in nineteen eighty-four. And so what I want us to understand is that we have a value that talks to local control. And that's what this is about, so that we can serve our residents. And with everything that we have heard tonight and everything that we read, and Councilmember McKeeley reports about the meetings, is that MBTA continues to grow and to provide the kind of service that our people expect when you're looking at microtransit, where you can call and get a vehicle that'll get you to your destination. So I think the promulgation of the law to get, to opt out of the Metropolitan System Transit Commission and to have your own services and for us to have local control. And so these are important to our residents. And also, one of the things that is really beneficial to everyone is the efficiency and responsiveness of the transit service that we enjoy here in Burnsville with MBTA. So the resolution that's before us is because of Luther and Dan, I believe, grumblings about changing the system. And I don't think that's going to be good for any of our residents or our business because right now, with microtransit, there's reverse commute, whereas it has been difficult. So when we have people from Minneapolis or other suburbs who come in and their destination is here in Burnsville, but they are at the Burnsville, the Burnsville.
Transit station.
Transit station. The Burnsville Transit Station. They can take a micro to either to Collins or to any of the destinations where they work. So I think that is a great improvement. So thank you for that, because that has always been a problem, is the reverse commute. Now you solve that issue. So before us, one of the things that I had asked our staff to do, and thank you so much, Greg, to you and staff, we looked at all of the other cities who are in the joint powers agreement, and everyone has adopted the resolution. Eagan has amended it. I think Eagan is the only city that amended the resolution. So my question to you, members of the council, your pleasure on the resolution that's before us. Any thoughts, concerns?
I'm more than happy to support the resolution. MBTA has been an amazing partner, and they provide a wonderful service for our community. And I hope they stick around as long as possible.
Okay.
I've, I've had this after a long time, Luther, and so, and I write, I ride the bus. I like, I like riding the bus. So, yeah, I'm aware of the Eagan one, too. It was, it was simpler than the one that you put out. I think the suburban transit had something to do with that as well, so it was kind of taking the best of all of it and putting it together. So they made it a simpler product, but I'm okay, I'm okay with the product that we're going to put out, if we're going to put it out today.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
I'm good with this as written.
Okay. And?
Ditto.
Okay. So.
No surprise.
Members of the council and staff, unanimous, so this will come before us at the next council meeting for adoption.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Luther, and congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to add a, a communication point. When I took over as chair, I took over a, a position on a monthly meeting at eight o'clock the first Monday of each month with the Transportation Chair two years ago, which was Ms. Deb Barber, and a couple other council members, Met Council members, and the STA Chair and MBTA. And over the last two years, I've, I've really gotten to be good friends and developed a great working relationship, professional relationship, personal relationship with both Deb Barber and Judy. As we all know, Deb Barber was just named the interim chair of the Met Council for the retiring Charlie. And in, I think it bodes well for us to have this very open line of communication with the new incoming interim chair. I believe Ms. Barber will serve as the chair through the end of next year, and then we'll see how the election turns out for governor, because this is an appointed body at the pleasure of the governor. So we'll see where it goes from there. But we do have a great working relationship, probably better than ever before in history today, with the Met Council. And so we're, we're going to continue those, those communication channels to work toward the best possible funding and, and support that we can for the suburban transit, recognizing that Met Council manages all funds, and Met Transit is this eight-hundred-pound gorilla, right? They are, they are huge in size and scope. And so, you know, it's, it's always a challenge. Nothing's changed in the thirty years that we've existed, but I think today we enjoy a great relationship.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the pickleball facility study. And so I want to welcome all of you, but members of our community, to not, you have had over a year to share your thoughts and your desires, and we have heard, and our staff has compiled all of that. So today, tonight, I'm not going to take any comments tonight. It's all been said, there's nothing else. And you have all been patient, and so we thank you for that as we went through the this process. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to now get to where we do our work and give staff direction with regard to where the pickleball courts will be located. So to all of our pickleball community folks, we have always said there's going to be pickleball courts in Burnsville, additional courts in Burnsville. Where is what's going to happen tonight? And tonight is when we make that decision and direct staff to move forward. So thank you for your engagement. Thank you for sharing all of your thoughts with us through, throughout the more than twelve months, I think it's been, I don't know, a more than, it's, I know it's over a year. So thank you for your patience and thank you for your engagement and continuing support of the work that we're doing. and thank you for your engagement and continuing support of the work that we're doing. So tonight, staff is going to be reporting, and I just ask that we all practice mutual respect. Everybody's been working very hard. And so tonight, I believe Jeff and Garrett are going to be reporting, and we also have consultants who did some feasibility work for us. So Jeff, Garrett, the floor is yours. Garrett Beck is our Parks and Recreational and Facilities Director, and Jeff is the Deputy City Manager and Community Development Director. And so Garrett, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, myself and Jeff will kind of walk through our feasibility study PowerPoint, and our consultants with Kim Lee Horn are here this evening, if there's any technical questions after we're through it that you might want some answers to. So you may all recall that in April of 2025, we had brought some information about possible pickleball locations in Burnsville to a work session. And at the conclusion of that meeting, council asked staff to do some additional work on a feasibility study that included schematic design of three other locations in addition to Allo Magnet, which we also, we had been pretty far down the road on. So the other three were Cliff End, Hollows, and Rose Park. So as part of that feasibility study with Kim Lee Horn, we did a site analysis and fit for the three new locations. We did traffic and parking for all four of the locations, stormwater management for the three new locations, and then we did a robust community engagement effort for all four of the locations as well. From a site analysis and fit, the Allo Magnet location that was considered was where the former Allo Magnet house was, as you enter into the park, just to the left on the, on the parkway there. At Cliff End Park, we actually looked at two different options. One is on the east side of the park, where we currently have youth soccer with our association, soccer fields laid out. And then on the west side of the park, we have sand volleyball courts on that side. At Hollows Park, there are two bat and ball fields there. The spot that we looked at was on the north side of the park, where the smaller bat and ball field location. And then at Rose Park, there are a number of soccer fields there. This was the one closest to the Collins Aerospace parking lot, and we'll have schematic designs that show that more in detail. From a traffic and parking standpoint, our consultant, as I mentioned, studied all four of the locations. We picked some weekday evening dates and times, which is when the parks are most commonly used for a number of different reasons in those parks, and then also some weekend dates. And then in addition, our consultant looked at similar complexes in Eden Prairie, Bloomington, Savage, and then again, looked at our Red Oak Park location, which would be a similar complex as well. Stormwater management, again, all four sites were, have been looked at, and our consultant is confident that at any of those locations, we'd be able to design a stormwater management system that would meet or exceed the requirements for stormwater control. Mentioned public engagement. Our process was, we got all of the schematic designs and, and stormwater plans figured out onto maps that we could share with the community. And then we went out into the park system. So we had open houses at all four locations in the months of June and July. And then we also put the information online to allow people who were not able to participate in any of those open houses to be able to provide feedback. And then in, towards the end of it, we did an open house to hear in the council chambers to kind of share with the community what we had heard to date. And, and then that all went into the study. So we'll walk through each of the four parks here. This is, and they're just in alphabetical order. So this one is Allo Magnet. You can see as you come into Allo Magnet, on the parkway there, it's just off to the left where the old house was. And so that is the site-fit location. From a traffic and parking standpoint, our consultant observed that there are 121 parking stalls in that large lot in that area. And during multiple events, including when they are out there, there are people that fill those 121 stalls. And then because of the baseball fields and the events, there are times when folks are parking on the grass and, and whatnot. So their original recommendation when we did the previous work recommended 18 stalls, and they maintained that recommendation to help alleviate some of those parking challenges if it were at this location. As mentioned, stormwater management can meet or exceed those requirements. From an engagement standpoint, this was the, had the lowest community support as far as feedback that we got online, at the pop-up events, and at the open house. And then from a cost standpoint, I'll mention now, each of the four locations have just over a $900,000 base amount to build the courts and the amenities associated with the court. So anything else above that $916,000, I believe, is related to additional site work that would need to be done. So in this case, it would be for the 18 additional stalls that would be part of this location. The next site we're looking at is at Cliff End Park, where the soccer field area is just, as you come in, it's right off to the, to the right of the parking lot. So as we look at this location, as the way the soccer club is currently using that site, the stormwater and courts themselves would go over top of where they currently have two medium-sized soccer fields and three small soccer fields. From a traffic and parking study, they, this location has, but in the two lots that are there, has 190 stalls. And their observations are that, that parking can meet the needs of adding a pickleball court location to this park. There are currently a couple days during the summer where the soccer club has one of their larger events, and all of those spots and spots in adjacent areas are filled. So they did note that as well. Again, stormwater management can exceed the standards or meet the standards required. And this one was also identified as low community support, and that our soccer club did provide a letter to the city saying that they are against this location because of the impact that it would have on their soccer program. The opinion of probable cost, here is that base that I was talking about. It's $919,848. There would be no additional needs expected, other than constructing the court at that location. And, and again, this is all in $20, $25 as well. The other site at Cliff End Park that we looked at was where the volleyball courts are currently. You can kind of see just to the north of the two middle courts, kind of the, the outline of a portion of the courts. You can also see to the left, there is stormwater managing this site already, including the parking lot that's just to the south there. And so constructing a court in this area would impact those existing stormwater and wetland areas, and there would have to be a need for mitigation and to address that if this was the preferred location. So as we look at the grid for this one, again, the site-fit is in the two volleyball court locations, similar to the traffic and parking, as mentioned in option one. And as far as the stormwater, mentioned again, that we would have some additional work that would have to be done in the stormwater areas to, to build the, the similar-sized complex in that area. From an engagement standpoint, it was fairly positive. We did not have a lot of negative comments on that. This received a moderate community support title here. And then opinion of probable cost is that, that base amount plus the expected work that would need to be done to manage the additional stormwater and wetland needs in that area by putting it in existing ones right now. And then the city would also have to consider, would it be appropriate to relocate those courts to another park to help meet some of the, the need and the demand in the city? So that could be an additional cost if we decide to do that as well. The next location that we looked at is Hollows Park. Again, you can kind of see in the schematic design, the courts are laid out over the top of an existing ball field, and you can also see above that, there's a recommendation for some additional parking that we'll talk more about on this next slide. So traffic and parking, there are 19 existing spaces. Two of them are handicap-accessible spaces. The recommendation is 22 new spaces would need to be added from a parking lot perspective. And they anticipate during peak times that it would exceed those 41 spaces, and there would be a need to identify options to park on West Park Drive. Again, stormwater management can meet or exceed the standards and requirements. And from an engagement standpoint, again, moderate community support. We did have some negative comments from people who are regular park users in that area. But overall, there was also positive feedback from that one. Opinion of probable cost, this one includes the base amount plus the costs associated with building the additional 22 stalls and what we may need to do on West Park Drive. And then the last location that we considered was Rose Park. To the southeast of the schematic design here, you see a parking lot. That is currently a parking lot that is owned and operated by Collins Aerospace. The, the additional gray spots, in our engagement and conversations with them, their request was if this was, ended up being a preferred location that worked out, that we would leave some space for them to be able to potentially add additional parking to their parking location already. So that is why you see the courts moved to the north there a little bit, to be able to accommodate that request, if that ends up being the case. So from a site-fit, there are currently the, the ability to have five soccer fields at this location. They are not all set up at all times to allow for rotation. This would be in place of one of those soccer fields. From a traffic and parking study, there are 214 existing parking spots, and there is not, the consultant noted that there would not be a need for additional parking spots. Stormwater management, we would have the ability to meet or exceed those standards. And then from an engagement standpoint, there was, really, this was the one spot that pretty much had positive support from the community. We, again, we did engage Collins Aerospace. Their engagement also indicated an interest in having a facility like this in the park, if this ends up being the location. From a cost standpoint, it is the base amount for the courts, and then any cost associated with a land use agreement. So I'm going to be turning it over here to Jeff here in a minute, but we'll be talking about what our current situation is with Rose Park, that we are not the landowners of that space, and some of the different situations associated with that. So.
So, Mayor and council, just wanted to give some context to the existing agreement that the city has with Collins Aerospace for the use of Rose Park, and talk a little bit about the conversations we've had with them about the future use for an expansion on the, on the, on the property. As you know, it's a, just short of a 15-acre piece of property. It's, the land is owned by Collins Aerospace, and the city actually entered into a lease agreement when we developed the park in 1992. So we leased the land from Collins Aerospace under that lease arrangement, which is unique across our system. But I would say, it's a unique arrangement to have a city park located on privately-owned land that is zoned and guided and, and planned for industrial use in our, in our, in our land use documents. Brief summary of the existing lease agreement. So it's, it's a dollar. So the term of the lease was, the compensation is, is just the dollar. It does restrict the city's use of the property to athletic fields and parking. And then it does say that if we, if the, if the city wants to make any material changes to the improvements on the site, it requires the, the approval of, of Collins. The original lease was actually a 20-year term lease. It did allow either party, including Collins, now Collins Aerospace, to cancel that lease within that 20-year term. The notice period is a, is a 60-day notice, so it's a very short notice period of a 60-day termination clause within that 20-year time period. And they would, there was a depreciation schedule. They would have to compensate the city for the development costs, the original development costs of that park. And it's depreciated over the 20-year term of that lease agreement, so that the payout to the city goes down over the 20-year terms of the lease. A couple of important notes is the lease was amended in 2010, September of 2010, very close to the, kind of the original termination of the 20 years. It was amended, the amendment effectively extended the term of the lease through 2032, so that's the current term of the lease. The two other material changes, it actually extended the termination clause to six months or 180 days. So they have to give us 180 days notice of termination. But it did, because it was at the end of the 20-year term, remove any compensation to the city, should they terminate the, the lease between now and the end of it in 2032. The last amendment occurred, as Garrett referenced a little bit, in April of 2019, when Collins constructed the parking lot for their use of their employees and their visitors and their contractors. When that happened in 2019, that was reflected in an amendment to the lease. Notably, it did remove that parking lot from the leased area. So it's outside of our leased area of the park now. But we do have some license to use that parking outside of normal daytime hours for, for public parking. So talk a little bit about what we've, as Garrett said, Collins has been a, a good partner on this project since we came to them originally in April. After the work session, we very quickly started conversations with them. They've been a great partner to, to have these conversations with, to allow us to explore the courts. As Garrett's noted, they've been, they've helped with engagement with their own employees on, on the project, and have supported, if the council moves forward, that with a pickleball project on the site. I want to talk a little bit about how far we've gotten with the land agreements, conversation with them, and then talk a little bit about some of the information we've, we've, that will inform next steps if we proceed forward with further conversations with them. So they've really provided three options to the city for us to consider. The three options is to extend the existing ground lease for another 20 years, reflecting the general lifespan of, of the pickleball courts. They've also talked, given us an option of extending the lease for three years with a purchase, with an option to purchase after that three-year term. And then the third option they have talked to us about, which is new to our conversation, is they are not planning for any use by Collins. They have no planned use for this property in the near term. So they have given us an option to potentially purchase the property from them. Couple, so a little bit more of information that we, that we've, we've reviewed as we've gone through this process is important, is because of that unique arrangement where it's guided industrial, it's zoned industrial, and it's, it's, so the county assessor has reviewed this and classified the property as industrial use. And then, yes, it's, it has a commensurate estimated market value that's reflective of that industrial use. In the 2025 estimated market value for property tax assessment purposes is just under $3.5 million. From that, right, the industry, when you apply the industrial property tax rates to that, that puts it just, just under $97,000 a year that Collins is responsible for paying in property taxes for the, for the use of a public park. Obviously, in our typical park system arrangement where we own the park, and we own the land, it's exempt under the property taxes, and so there is no property tax paid. So I think as we, we don't have specific terms from, if we go back to the three options, in this time, we've been able to get to the proposal that's before the council. We do not currently have financial terms negotiated with Collins. So the next step, as Garrett will talk about in the next slide, is to continue those conversations with Collins over the next four to six months, and bring back to the council specific financial and lease or sale terms for your consideration, so we can understand the full impact. I think the first part we would start with is with the property tax assessment. There would be, we know that Collins had some conversations in 2018 with the county assessor to, to see if the property would qualify for tax exemption. I think we would, at the first step, want to engage the, the conversation about what lease terms would be required for us to, for the property to potentially be considered tax-exempt, and then understand the financial implications of the city to that, so that we can come back to you with more specific terms of both financial lease and other terms for your consideration.
Okay. Any, any questions? Because my comment is, thank you for all of that work with Collins. And they've been a great partner. they've been a great partner. I know because I was here in ninety-two when we had the first agreement with them, and then updating it in twenty-nineteen.
That was for the parking lot, yes.
And, and so it goes until twenty-thirty-two, so. And it's good to know that they are open to continuing and giving us another twenty-year lease on top of that. The life expectancy of a pickleball court is?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. So, at that time, a decision can be made about all of that. So, deep appreciation and gratitude, please, to the team over at Collins, because they have been great partners, and we've worked with them. Now, on the issue of, of the taxes, forgiving the taxes, so it's, we're not setting a precedent because we've done this with Sue Fisher Park, correct? Yeah. So, Sue Fisher Park, that whole land was owned by Matt Fisher, and we needed more parkland for softball fields, and so we negotiated, and he gave us the land, and the taxes were forgiven. So, we're not setting a precedent on this, in this way. So, members of the council, yes, council member?
I was just struck by the lease. I know we don't have numbers yet, and they've been great partners, a dollar per year's been really good.
One dollar, sure, one dollar for all the years.
Oh, for all the, oh, that's even better. But, but I'm just wondering, as, you know, I've negotiated many leases, and when you talk about a twenty-year extension, is it possible to talk about with the first write of refusal, should they decide they want to sell that land, so that we don't have to lease for three and then buy it, we can do it for twenty, and anytime during that time, a future council could make that decision, they want to own that land and go from there? Just, just an idea for you guys, as you're negotiating.
Thank you. Councilmember Gustafson, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers, if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll zip through the last two scheduled slides here, if you're okay with that, and then we'll, yeah. So, because we have a unique situation where one of the locations is not owned by us, and the other three are, we have two different schedules set out for information for yourself and the community. If the preference tonight is for us to pursue Rose Park further, staff would get back together with RTX slash Collins Aerospace and begin having those discussions. We anticipate that would take approximately four to six months to get the information figured out, to have lawyers review it, to communicate it back to council, and ultimately get it on a council meeting for your consideration. At the conclusion of that, so that would take us somewhere to that April-May time slot, that, you know, of twenty-twenty-six. We'd be looking at a nine-to-twelve-month process. Knowing Minnesota the way that it is, we would work with our consultant to then go ahead and do final design on a site, and then we would go ahead and get bids and specs authorized and submitted out for the bidding process, and in this scenario, you would be looking at a January twenty-twenty-seven build, based on getting onto contractor schedules and whatnot. If we were to look at an existing park situation, we could have direction as early as tonight, at which point, we do have our consultant under contract where we could go ahead and do the design process and work on the bids and specs, or we'd be looking to get those out in somewhere early next year of twenty-twenty-six, and go through the bidding process, and if that was a positive situation, we'd be looking to construct in the summer/fall of twenty-twenty-six. Again, most likely, you would not be looking at a facility that could be used by the community based on Minnesota weather until spring twenty-twenty-seven. So, with that, I think that concludes our presentation.
Yes, Councilmember Keely.
Just comparing that option to Cliff Bend, are they similar timelines, because both require some preparatory work, and, you know, with Cliff, it's the DNR and wetland mitigation, et cetera. With Rose, it's contractual lease, et cetera. I mean, we're still looking at twenty-twenty-seven, spring, for either one of those options?
Yeah, Councilmember Keely, there would be some additional work that would need to be done at Cliff Bend or at the volleyball courts for the reason that you mentioned. Again, in one scenario, you know, the difference is really the time that it would take us to negotiate a land use agreement with Rose Park. Everything else is ready to go. It's just going through that process, and then dealing with Minnesota weather.
Yeah, Jeff?
Mayor and council, just to add on to that, so I would say the Cliff Bend location would follow the existing city park schedule, because the permitting that's required under the wetland alteration could be done in tandem at the same time as the construction drawings are being developed, whereas we would wait on construction drawings until we have lease terms that are acceptable to the city for the Rose Park location.
Cliff could run a little bit faster, per se, but given the weather, given, are we still thinking, it's not going to really, will it buy us any additional time as far as being open for twenty-twenty-six versus being open for twenty-twenty-seven?
I do not, first, I know when we did Red Oak Park, we opened for like, two weeks, and then closed it down, right? And then we did a grand opening the next spring, right? We could do something like that, but I don't think we're buying ourselves a whole lot.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson?
With, with that being on the wetlands at Cliff Bend, and I do like Cliff Bend as well, would that, is it a possibility it could trigger EIS?
Mayor and council, it wouldn't be a mandatory trigger for an EIS, and we would need to review the mandatory triggers for an environmental assessment worksheet. I don't think it would.
No, our initial assessment and?
You want to introduce yourself, so I know this, these are our consultants from Kimley Horn. So, Garrett, would you like to introduce our guests?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Joining us tonight is Katie Lyes and Todd Hallenden, and they have been great partners on this project, and here to answer these technical questions for us.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Katie?
Yeah, our initial understanding of the environmental impact at this point does not trigger any sort of EIS. There are additional permits we would need to work through, but at least with what we understand with the impacts with the preliminary design, is we can meet the existing city park schedule.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thoughts, comments? Yeah, Councilmember Schultz?
So, these are just my thoughts, just, I mean, just in general, I don't like the idea of us building, like, actual structure-type things, hard structure, on property we don't own. It may be that we can do the lease, and they are, continue to be magnificent, and that's But what, I mean, they don't have a crystal ball, and we don't have a ball, what if they go out of business, and they get acquired, and it's piecemealed, and I mean, like, there's a lot of things that could happen. That's what makes me nervous. For Cliff Bend, it makes sense that we add a volleyball court at Crystal Lake Park, because the volleyball court at Crystal Lake Park gets a lot of use, and that seems to work better there. So, if we're not going to have volleyball already, maybe, at Cliff Bend, why not put an amenity in there that could be used? So, that's, that's my thought on it, that's why I lean towards Cliff Bend, but those are my thoughts on it.
Okay. Vince?
I'm happy to explore Rose a little bit more as an alternative to Al Magnet, but Al Magnet still remains my top choice.
Members of the council, it seems to me that Rose Park seems to be the direction that the majority of the council, if I'm reading the room correctly. Councilmember Keely?
Yeah.
Rose is your first choice?
Rose and Cliff, I think, both have a lot of appeal.
Kind of like one and two, I think, for me, Rose and Cliff.
And?
Yeah, Rose and Cliff.
Rose and Cliff, okay. And Kara, Cliff is number one for you, or is that what I'm hearing, or what?
It is. Cliff is number one for me, Al Magnet is number two, and Rose is number three. I just don't like that we don't have them.
Yeah. Vince? So, you already said Rose and Al Magnet.
If we can get agreeable terms at Rose.
Okay, okay. From my perspective, I have great trust in the relationship that we have with Collins. Goes all the way back, and we have great history, going all the way back to nineteen-ninety-two, and everything that we have done with them. And Rose Park has strong support from the community. The other is that there is, there are no homes around there, and it's an industrial area. So, staff, it appears to, from the consensus around here, Rose is at the top of the list. So, please proceed, if I'm not reading the room correctly, proceed to negotiate with Rose, and see where we go from there. And, anything else, members of the council?
Good negotiators, you can do it.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and the thing is, they have done their expansion with the MIMS and the Clean Room and the Wind Tunnel, and we worked very well with them. And I was proud to go to the legislature and, and testify and, and for those, for what they needed, to make those expansions. And they've made some other choices with regard to, instead of building more on their property, they're renting from Happy on one-hundred-and-forty-third and on forty-two. So, they've got a lot of space and all of that, and they have been great partners, and so, you know, however you negotiate, as we go forward with them, they have been good partners. So, Rose, proceed with that, that's number one, consensus-wise, that I hear, and then come back.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. We will, we will proceed with, proceed with that negotiation, and we'll keep you informed along the way.
Yeah. Thank you for all of that work.
The, the specific terms, of course, of the lease agreement, we'll come back to the city council at a future meeting for your direction and input, before we proceed forward with any lease agreement.
Okay, very good. Okay. So, we're proceeding with Rose. Okay, thank you so much for your patience and for being present.
Thank you.
Yes, we're moving forward.
Your Tuesdays are free now.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The next item on our agenda is, this is the local affordable housing aid, and presenting this evening is our deputy community development director, Travis Visterde. Travis, floor is yours.
Thank you for all your work. I really do appreciate it. Your work is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, the discussion before you tonight is really a continuance of the conversation around how we might want to spend our local affordable housing aid dollars, or commonly referred to as LHA, and just as a reminder, those LHA funds originate from a quarter-percent sales tax that is collected at the state level across the seven-county metro area, and then distributed to local jurisdictions to address our specific affordable housing needs within our community. And just as a reminder, where we're at in terms of what we've accumulated with LHA funding, in twenty-twenty-four, we collected four-hundred, or the state collected four-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, which were allocated to us, and then, at the time of the last work session back in May, we were projecting eight-hundred thousand would be collected for twenty-twenty-five, and it turns out, that forecast was a little short, and in reality, we will be receiving one-point-one-four million dollars of LHA funds in twenty-twenty-five. So, additional dollars to be spent there. Again, as a reminder, in the work session last May, council directed staff to allocate three-hundred thousand dollars of our LHA funds to support our home improvement loans, kind of our existing home improvement loan program, and then a hundred thousand dollars for our senior deferred loan program. And I'm happy to report out, working with our contractor, our vendor, Center for Energy and Environment, we have relaunched those programs with that new funding source about a month ago. And then in that same council work session, we were directed, or staff were directed to kind of explore and build out a down payment assistance program, which we're calling Burnsville Home Start, an emergency housing voucher program, and vacant residential property rehab program that we're calling Productive Properties. And all three of these program offerings, just to be clear, we're planning to, we're suggesting we, we use those dollars to support low-income families at the zero-to-eighty-percent AMI levels. So, getting into the details around those programs, the first, the first offering is the down payment assistance loans. We're suggesting these be funded at two-hundred thousand dollars annually using LHA funds, so that would cover twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. We are recommending that we offer these up to any homebuyer that is interested in purchasing a home in Burnsville. They need not be a first-time homebuyer, they need not be an existing Burnsville resident. And we are suggesting and offering up a loan in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars to support down payment assistance. The rationale there is that would be roughly half of a traditional twenty-percent down, down payment for a four-hundred thousand, four-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar house. And then we are also recommending that we cap the sale price of any home where we provide this sort of assistance at four-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. Additional details, the buyer must contribute one percent of the purchase price and meet all of our city underwriting requirements, and then we have confirmed with the Center for Energy and Environment that they would be happy to administer that program for us. They already provide similar down payment assistance for other municipalities, including Blaine, Coon Rapids, and Minnetoka. The terms of the loan, these would be fully forgiven after thirty years. We are recommending no interest charged to the borrower, no payments required, all of it is deferred. However, if the property is sold within that thirty-year period, the entire loan needs to be repaid, plus the origination fee, which is eleven hundred dollars per loan. And then I should also just flag that we can't use LHA dollars to support program administration, so we are recommending that we use EDA levy dollars to cover the cost for administration for this program, which we're estimating would be somewhere in the So, that's the first program. The next program is, was an idea that kind of came out of conversation with our emergency responders and neighborhood services. These are emergency housing vouchers. We are recommending that this be funded at forty thousand dollars annually in twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. These would be used in kind of an emergency situation where a, where a family is displaced due to a fire, or a police response, or neighborhood services activity, and they need a temporary place to stay and get back on their feet. How it would work is, at the time- How it would work is at the time of the emergency, it could even be in the middle of the night, the family would just verbally confirm to the officers or the fire staff or neighborhood services staff that they are receiving some sort of government assistance. And then when they arrive at the hotel, they would need to sign a document certifying their income level. We are recommending up to three rooms per family with a maximum 14-day stay. Again, this is just temporary bridge housing. We've kind of built the budget around $150 per night per room. That is subject to change, but we're just building the budget around kind of worst-case scenario and using that $150 per night. And the other flag that I want to just raise on this one is if there's a situation where we determine a family was not eligible, and they were not at that income level, and we provided temporary housing to them, we would be on the hook to repay the state for those dollars. But I think it's unlikely to occur, but it's a risk that we would be taking on. And then the third program, we are calling Productive Properties. This is our vacant, single-family home rehab program. We are recommending funding this at $500,000 a year in 2026 and 2027. In this case, in this program, we would partner and coordinate with Habitat for Humanity, and they would reach out to the variety of single-family properties that we've identified that are vacant and have a history of property maintenance concerns, and inquire if they would like to sell their home voluntarily to Habitat. And Habitat would then take ownership of the property, rehabilitate it, and then sell it to an affordable family. And we are setting this up to address one property per year. And the idea would be we would take on one in 2026 and take on another in 2027 and evaluate the program going forward. Like I mentioned, these would be available to single-family homes and townhomes as well. Once we rehabilitated these properties and then sold them to a family at affordable levels, these would be deed restricted for 30 years. If the homeowner chose to sell, we would be repaid fully all of our expenses upon sale. However, Habitat for Humanity would like first right of refusal and would ideally find an additional family that meets those income qualifications and would kind of re-up the 30-year term to that family. We are projecting and suggesting that we cap our loss around this program to 100,000 per year. So we would finance these acquisitions, rehabilitate them with our original $500,000. Once the property is sold to an affordable family, the proceeds of that mortgage and sale would come back to the city along with some additional Habitat for Humanity funding, making us whole less the $100,000. And we wouldn't go beyond that $100,000 without additional council approval. And the last thing that I just want to mention on this, around this program, is that we can use LHA funds to support administrative costs incurred by our partner at Habitat for Humanity because they're a nonprofit housing provider in the metro.
Question, just to clarify, could you go back one slide?
Sure.
For some reason, I can't remember this. Need restricted for 30 years, full repayment of all expenses upon a sale.
Yeah.
Is it possible that that sale may not come for 20, 25, 30, I mean up to 30 years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And like I mentioned before, if the property owner wanted to sell, they need to go to Habitat for Humanity. And Habitat has the opportunity to purchase the property and then resell it to another affordable family. So that term could be extended out another 30 years.
Right, long as Habitat maintains control, per se, as first right of refusal, that those funds that we invested would just continue on indefinitely, whatever, right?
Yep. That's correct.
Yeah. Councilmember Goss.
So basically, I agree with you. It could take 10, 15, 20 years, 30 years. But as time goes on, if this program continues with LHA, eventually this fund will start to replenish itself along with the funds that are coming in.
Well, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, if the property owners were to stay in there for 30 years, that $100,000 that the city invested of LHA dollars would be forgiven.
Okay.
So we would not be reimbursed that $100,000. However, we will continue to receive LHA dollars, probably at the, you know, depending on the economy, at the 1.1 million dollars per year on an ongoing basis. And we could utilize those, and we're planning to utilize those for future acquisition and rehabs.
Right. So under this program, if they decide to sell in five years, if it's $500,000, we'll get 400,000 back and it'll go back into the LHA fund?
We will receive the $400,000 back immediately, well, within 30 days of the sale to the affordable family.
So it's the $100,000 that gets forgiven?
Yeah.
That is correct. Only the $100,000.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Follow-up, sorry.
Yes. Councilmember Kee.
I think we had talked previously, there is a limited number of identified properties that sort of fit this mold. If we were to assume we were to successfully, just optimistically, successfully acquire them all, turn them over to Habitat, properties improved, et cetera, now we're in the next year, right after all of those have been succeeded. Do we have any concept of what we might re-attribute or redeploy these funds for? Or is there other circumstances like the next level down? Like, these are the most critical. Is there other properties that could be considered for this type of program that are, maybe they are inhabited, but they're still in the same kind of poor shape?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, councilmember, councilmembers, this program was modeled after an existing program that already exists in Edina and Roseville. In their cases, what they're doing is using their funds to try to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing. And rather than a property being sold to a developer, torn down, flipped, and a big mansion being constructed, they're using those dollars to preserve some of those houses. So I could imagine in the not-too-distant future, once we work through that list of vacant, blighted properties, that we would come back to the council and say, do we want to tweak this program so that Habitat can just proactively reach out to property owners to determine if they would like to participate in this and preserve their home for an affordable family going forward in the future?
Right.
But the goal at this time is to work through the list of those vacant, blighted properties to see if we can get any of those rehabilitated and reoccupied with the dollars that we have for the foreseeable future.
One more time, we're not, we're not purchasing the properties, the
Habitat.
Habitat's doing it. So they're doing the work. And I know that they not only redevelop, but they get the people to buy the houses and actually even originate the mortgages on those houses. So from the time it starts, it's like in their hands.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, that is correct.
We're kind of a conduit to just give them the money and then get, or do they have money back again?
We are acting as kind of the financial backer here for this program. And that's pretty much our only responsibility. We will be providing them a list of properties that are blighted and vacant, and they can work through those.
Yeah. Councilmember Kee.
Just one last, is there a limit to the value of the house that might qualify in this program? Typically, you don't find blighted $900,000 homes that are vacant. But is there sort of a natural limitation? Is it the half million? That if there is a situation, but it's 650, unless you come back to us and we were to support it, that wouldn't fall into the program limitations?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, the reason we landed on $500,000 is we sat down with Habitat and kind of explored some performers that they have developed for houses that they've worked on in Edina, which where land values are high, and Roseville. And on average, they're around $500,000. Their programs don't target, don't seek out blighted properties. So I think ours, our program would actually come in quite a bit lower than what we're so we've kind of built in a little bit of that buffer with that $500,000 number.
Thank you.
I just, Mayor and council, I can just add one on. In addition, the family has to meet the income qualifications of the 80% AMI. And so they need to qualify, obviously, for the underwriting requirements of Habitat's mortgage for the home price based on their affordable, their income at or below 80% of area median income.
Right. Yes, for the buyer. Yes, for the buyer, right. I was thinking of the acquisition side, right? On the front end, is it, if there's a $675,000 house that's been sitting vacant, we don't really have the funds to acquire that, per se. So it's, that 500 is sort of our cap.
Yep. That's correct.
Anything else?
Thank you for that work.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Great.
Thank you for that idea.
So in terms of next steps, councilmembers, with, following up from your direction that we received here tonight, we present the proposals to the EDC in November for their review. And then our plan is to finalize contracting with both CEE and Habitat for Humanity in 2026. We will also work with our communications team to develop a significant marketing strategy for these programs. And then our goal would be to launch them in 2026 and hopefully rehabilitate that first home probably late in 2026. And then lastly, I'd also like to suggest that we conduct a performance evaluation around our LHA funds. In quarter two of 2026, we'll have over a million dollars programmed at that point. And it would be great to come back and discuss with you all and get further direction on what is working, what's not, what are our current needs, and go from there. One of the things that is just worth pointing out, a lot of what we're focusing these dollars on is supporting existing or supporting homeowners. But there is also a need for preserving some of our naturally occurring affordable housing. And I know there is need to support financing new units and new construction as well. So I'm hopeful that we'll have additional ideas that we can explore with you all at that time. And with that, I can take any further questions.
Okay. Any questions, councilmember Kee?
Just a comment, I mean, we've thankfully have had the opportunity to talk about this. But the closer we get to this this decision and really what you've presented today, it's very exciting. This is, all these programs meet a certain need that we have yet to be able to offer something from us. And as you noted in prior presentations, they target what the state or county isn't doing. So we're really going in and filling in the gap where people are caught. And just so many great things that are going to improve Burnsville neighborhoods with a blighted home that's vacant, opportunities for first-time home buyers, just, these are fantastic programs.
Yeah.
I'm glad this is what we decided to do with the LHA money.
And first, I want to thank our staff for all of the great work. But thanks to the legislature that promulgated this act that allows local government to have these funds to rehabilitate properties, to help our residents, and to make sure that we have the funds available to build the vibrancy that we want here in Burnsville. Our values are met, that we have a vibrant community, that we boldly lead. So thank you for all the work that you've done because to all of the comments that have been made, it's really great work. So, members of the council, you support the proposals that staff have presented to us this evening?
100%.
100%?
Thank you, Vince, for bringing some of these ideas forward.
Kara, is she still with us?
The nonprofit part that he brought to the table, like, okay, now it makes it work.
So I'm sure that she supports it also, she's off. So anyway.
She sent a note, she is unable to sit up anymore because her back's killing her.
Yeah. So, councilmembers, we have done work with the Center for Energy and the Environment. Do you support our partnership with these organizations, the Center for Energy and the Environment and Habitat for Humanity?
Absolutely. We need to outsource that service. We don't need to try and take that on as a city. We're not, we're not the experts in it.
No. Okay. Very good. So Greg, staff, move forward. And I think you'll be coming before us to approval of this at a future council meeting to approve this program, these programs.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much to all of you. Thank you. Beth?
She's here.
Yeah. So thank you to the team. Great work. The next item is the community vision. And Jeff, you're presenting this.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and council. As you recall, it was December work session when we brought a conversation with council back that about medical destination, regional medical destination marketing. And it was after an October work session last year where we had talked about the heart of the city vision. And at that time, the council gave us direction to start to develop a community vision initiative to develop and talk more about at the council offsite, which we did. Then in February this year, we talked and got the council's input on outcomes and your preferences for the community visioning process. So tonight, we just wanted to come back and kind of introduce the community visioning and provide a little bit more details on the process and timelines for launching this project in 2026. Just as a quick reminder, as we've talked about, as we've, is that really what the community vision is, is engaging and empower our community to have a voice in how they want the city to look and really to ask the question, how do you want the city to look and feel in that next 10-year period? And we were intentional about picking that 10-year period as being kind of a near-term realistic future, but also one that coincides with the Met councils and our comprehensive plan update, which, as you know, occurs every 10 years as well. So since the February work session, we've had conversations with our community partners, the Chamber, Experience Burnsville, and the school district, and introduced them to it and asked for their willingness to participate. And just a high-level summary of those conversations is, you know, some enthusiasm and support for the community visioning project, seeing the alignment. And really, the strongest message I remember hearing is a willingness and desire to be involved and engaged and a part of the process as we move it forward. So over the last number of months, we've spent some time reviewing our peer communities here in the metro that have done this, as well as some of the national models for doing community visioning and some of the national other cities that have done this to really bring the council a little bit of framework around how this could be implemented for your feedback and ultimately some direction on a couple items for your direction. So the first is just to talk about the structure of kind of the management or facilitating of the process. So we really see kind of three roles in this. And so I'll walk through each of those groups and what their role and responsibility is. The first is a community steering committee. That would be kind of a stand-up committee that we would set up just for this community visioning process. It would be appointed by the council, right? Just similar to your standing boards and commissions. This would be appointed by the council. They're really responsible for providing input and feedback on the process that we use to do the community visioning, ensuring it's reflective of the community's input, and then also ensuring broad participation by the community amongst the steering committee itself, but also with the groups that they represent and the connections that they have in the community. The second is a project team. And that would be kind of an internal staff team comprised of our departments that's responsible ultimately for kind of organizing, communicating, and then executing on the project. And then the third partner is our partner consultant. This would be a neutral party that's responsible for gathering the data and analysis for the grounding assessment. We've talked about two primary deliverables for this, a strong grounding and assessment document to inform the vision, but then also kind of the vision, the community vision itself. So they would be responsible for kind of gathering that data and analysis, facilitating the visioning process, providing some insight, and at the end, the important piece of kind of synthesizing all that community input and reporting it back to the community and also to the council in the final deliverable. Here is our kind of recommendation for the council's consideration on how the steering committee could be comprised. It would include two city council liaisons, representatives from each of the council's boards and commissions, represented from each of our community partners to represent that, to be reflective of their interests, strong interest in being involved and participating. And then a mix of other residents and business representatives that you would interview and appoint as part of your process.
I would like to add the faith community to that group. They were very much a part of partnership for tomorrow and really brought a good perspective, a different perspective, a good perspective. So we shouldn't not recognize our faith community.
Good suggestion. I didn't see that.
Huh?
Yeah, it's a good suggestion. I remember them from the prior cycle. I remember them from the prior cycle.
Yeah. Okay. Any other thoughts with the committee's structure?
I think that's a good start there.
Yeah. And then, are you going to your timeline?
So, Mayor, there's a lot here. So I just want to walk through kind of the timeline we have put together for the project. So we'll spend the rest of 2026 establishing the internal project team and then kind of drafting the request for proposals that we will release for the partner consultant. The first quarter then of next year, we would be focused on the council establishing and appointing the steering committee. And then in that time period, releasing the RFP for the partner consultant. Second quarter of next year, we would facilitate the partner consultant selection process and then ultimately the contract with the partner consultant on getting them on board. And then spend July to September of next year, so the third quarter, beginning kind of the grounding and assessment and then also starting to design the visioning process. So that kind of the end of 2026 into the beginning of 2027, the six months during that period, we are facilitating the community engagement, the kind of the core engagement process for the visioning. The goal is then to complete at least the grounding assessment by December of next year. And then in the second half of 2027, we are synthesizing the community input and then doing a community report back to the community on what we heard.
I just remembered another group that I think we need to have an odd steering committee, youth. They were so important in the partnership. That's how we got the skateboard park, the garage there. We should make sure that we have a youth group in that.
Excellent. We'll make those, certainly make those changes.
I like your timeline.
Go ahead.
It gets to getting everything that you need in adopting the vision and the writing of the comp plan. And when is the comp plan due?
It is due in essentially the second. I always hesitate because there's like a six-month period where our adjacent communities get to review it. So I always say it's mid-2028 is when the draft of the comprehensive plan needs to be completed.
Mid-2028?
Yeah.
Because I know it has to be before because it gets adopted in '30.
Yes. End of '29 is when it needs to be adopted, and then '30 is when it's effective.
So we adopt it in '29, but it goes to the Met council?
We kind of approved the draft in mid-2028.
Yeah.
And then we submit it to all of our adjacent communities, and they get legally six months to review it and provide comments before we can submit it to the Met council for their like nine-month review period.
Yeah. I just remember it's a very protracted process. Okay.
Question on the size of the, how big can the steering committee be? Is there a limit that we should have as far as the total number?
Yeah, it was a big one for partnerships.
We had them filled downstairs.
Huh?
We were filled, packed downstairs.
Yeah, this was always packed.
Well, are we talking steering committee or just participation overall?
So the steering committee was about '27, I think. But the engagement portion, the engagement portion was like over 2,000 people.
Yeah, which is great. Just the steering committee is.
Yeah. It's about, I think it was about 27 people if I remember correctly.
Jeff, what would be your ideal goal for managing a cohesive and functioning steering committee?
Yeah. Mayor and council, so there's, I mean, the way we have it structured, there's kind of nine established positions already, right? Before we even get into the number. I share the, I don't have the great answer. Like, it needs to be this number. But, you know, having the opportunity for the committee to be providing, because it's not the only group we are engaging in the input and visioning piece. It's really just to provide input and feedback to the consultant and the project team, ultimately the council, on what the process should look like and whatnot. I would say, you know, probably in the 15 to 20 would be ideal for just like a working group matter, but.
So you know who else? I keep thinking of all of the people who were part of the arts community, too. So youth, faith, arts. Because that's how a lot of this other stuff came about. So, yeah. But if you look at, if you want 20 or 21, we always went for an odd number in case votes had to be taken on certain things. But it's up to you and what you can manage.
Yeah, so I would, I mean, I would recommend, I mean, in the ballpark of 15 to 20 people, just to keep it manageable. Certainly if the council wants more, you can do that. And I think as we work through, we'll target the positions you've talked about established here as well as the input we've got about the faith community and the youth and arts community. And then we'll bring the, you know, the applications and the council can do the interviews and make the selection.
You're the one that will be managing this?
I think in conjunction with the project team, right? The project team and the consultant partner will be important leaders. But yes, I will.
Don't want to overwhelm you. We've been through these.
One of the things that I'm real comfortable with is that you have a great team.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, to be clear, Jeff's certainly taking the lead on bringing this update to you and the project to this point in time. This is not a community development project. This is an organization project. So from a staff leadership perspective, there will be many of us involved to manage and lead the project. Where the ultimate project leadership lands, we'll figure that out as it continues to evolve. We're going to be learning here. But I do think it's important to note that every department of this organization will be actively involved as we engage as many residents as we possibly can.
Yeah. So I like what you have put in place. And I like that this is an organizational project that everyone's involved. It's all of us together. It's all of us together. Any other thoughts?
Who are going to be the council members of this group?
Well, I think we could.
I think you just volunteered yourself.
Yeah. So it also says, who's going to have the availability to attend the meeting? I have availability to attend the meetings.
I have availability.
I don't.
And I have availability.
I got asked to coach basketball, so.
You have no.
So is that why?
That's a long season, pal.
Because they don't want you to be bored in the winter.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah. So here's what, because I see all of the things. You have three young men who are highly scheduled.
Very scheduled.
Highly scheduled. And you're busy.
We can figure out who the members are at a later date. I just wanted to see if any of you put your hands up right away just to kind of brush that out of the way now.
Yeah. Well, I'm available too because.
I'd be good with doing it, too.
So.
There you go.
Yeah. So.
You're in.
Yeah.
I vote yes. I know.
Yeah.
I would love to be a part of it, but.
Dan, you got so much going on right now.
I mean, aren't you going to be traveling for work also to Chicago?
Like?
Next week?
Next week. Next week, yes. Not for work. I'll be traveling while riding on the train or riding in the back of the RV, but going for family.
Are you taking the train down?
Oh.
Trying to.
That's a fun trip.
Depends. If my brother and I are the only two going, we're going to jump on the Borealis. And if Carrie's going to go, then we're going to drive the RV.
Every once in a while, I used to get tired of flying down there, so I'd just take the train. It was just so relaxing.
Where are you off to?
Got a lot of work done. Chicago. It goes to Milwaukee and then south to Chicago.
You're taking the train?
$95, coach, each way. Someone else does the driving. It's seven and a half hours.
We're going to drop off before downtown Chicago because we're, our end is Antioch. But it's two hours more than driving yourself, and you don't have to drive. That's pretty nice.
But also, it's a beautiful route.
Yeah, it is. Hey, I love riding a train.
Yeah, the leaves are going to be great on that trip.
Yeah, that's true. I didn't think about it.
Okay. Is there anything else, Greg and Jeff, on this item?
I think, Mayor, and our next steps, as I said, this, the rest of the year, appointing the project team that Greg talked about, you know, facilitating the leadership, defining the leaders internally for that across departments. And then we'll bring back a framework for the council's appointment of the steering committee and then the request for proposals for the partner consultant.
So Vince, I was just thinking, that little girl of yours, she's going to be highly scheduled, too, because she likes to be involved in so many things.
She already is, yes. She's going to be very busy as well. And I'll be telling you about I'm coaching volleyball soon.
You are a glutton.
I only get to do it once.
And she also has your number.
Especially this morning when we had to switch from shorts to pants.
Okay. Well, let's go to any reports. Vince, you have any reports?
I have no reports.
Metro Cities, we had our board meeting last week. And as luck would have it, one of our policies for our legislators is to allow La Ha money to be used for admin. So, and that was done by all the cities in the metro area. So we'll be lobbying for that at Metro Cities. Experience Burnsville, we're meeting on Thursday. Our talk's going to be about loss, the possible loss of revenue from the Hampton, how that's going to affect us. Amy's already redid a budget for 2026 reflecting that loss, should that happen. So we'll be talking about that budget. And then we'll be talking about ways of exploring additional funding opportunities for, so they can keep up the level of service that we've become used to over there. A full hour and a half.
Okay. I think Kara is off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Dan?
I-35 Solutions just had a couple things that are relevant. Savage is going for state bonding for 20 million for the Highway 13 corridor. There's a funding gap entirely, including our 25 million at Nickleton Highway 13 of 80 million. That was sort of a moment for everybody at I-35 when Lisa shared that. And then Lakeville talks about this a lot. County Commissioner Mary Liz Holberg does. But the general lack of east-west highway corridors in Dakota County has always caused major congestion, especially when there's just an accident on one of them. It backs up because there just isn't that many. And of course, we added to the problem. No, MINDOT added to the problem when they took out the three, well, two and a half because 13's open on just two, you know, one lane each way. But so it is a problem. I think Mary Liz mentioned this a year or two ago or more, that Dakota County's growth and population, traffic, it's a very unique county in the state of Minnesota with a significant lack of east-west corridors to handle the volume of traffic and the growth. So something that she's been calling a lot of attention to. And I guess it resonated a little more with many of us because of our MINDOT bridge replacement project going on now. But the legislative update was sort of just a reminder in 2026, the governor and all House and all Senate seats are up. So 2026 is a very big political year for the state of Minnesota. So the other thing, MBTA. Part of my work lately has been related to managing some organizational things within MBTA. And I just want to let everyone know that one of the things we decided to create was a compensation committee and also a finance and budget committee. But the compensation committee, a byproduct, was a creation of a new ad hoc city and county HR directors group to help MBTA handle annual compensation for Luther, who was here earlier tonight, and just the whole process. When we do our next compensation study, when we evaluate things. I thought this was a really good idea because we're a, MBTA is a joint powers agreement of seven cities. And the counties don't provide any funding, but they're on our Board of Directors because we operate within the counties and they're partners. So we want to make sure their voices at the table. So I thought this idea really was well. And I want to compliment our city manager, Lindberg, for stepping in to the idea and saying we would be happy to lead the effort. Burnsville and Mike, our HR director, to take the lead on it. And so I'm working with the MBTA staff to sort of get that launched. And I think that's actually, as I thought about it, I thought, why wasn't it done this way 30 years ago? Like, this should have been like the model because we're all member cities and we have a stake in what MBTA does. And as you saw with the presentation, our public transit provider is MBTA. They do a great job. And we, as a city, are benefiting from it. We're a pass-through of all seven cities. It's a pass-through of about $25 million in funding to the organization. So some of that organizational structure and administration, when it comes to annual review and compensation, I think it's fair to have some voices at the table made up of cities and the county's HR directors. So lots of good things happening.
Answer to your question why it wasn't done. Do you know that back then, MBTA only had three employees? And then when I was on the board, it was like five. And then, so there was no need to even have.
Wasn't big enough to really warrant it maybe back then, right?
Yeah. So. And everything was outsourced. Everything was outsourced.
Yes. It was a model for outsourcing literally everything.
Yeah. Everything was outsourced.
Yeah.
So it's very different now because how many employees does MBTA have now?
52, I believe.
How many?
52.
Five-two? Oh, my God. When I left that board, there were only seven.
Mm-hmm. When I joined, it was 15. And as, you know, as we grew, more routes, more people, more staff, microtransit definitely was more. But the other big boost, probably accounting for almost 15 people just in the last year, is we took over some of what we were outsourcing. Dispatch and some maintenance. It was better to be internally controlled. And we can all relate to that with when we used to outsource some snowpowling and some lawn median mowing. And we decided the quality and the controls and the efficiency could be gained by taking it inside. That's exactly the philosophy with certain areas of what we outsourced, we were doing. And there's actually more. There's a few more positions that we're looking at. But we're in an RFP right now with Schmitty for all the drivers and all the other support that they do. So we're looking holistically at how the organization operates. So some of those employees are just, it's a switch from an outsourced expense line to an internal. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Our Savage-Burnsville committee is going to meet this Thursday. So I can report on that. MLC, that's this one. When is it? Next Wednesday? Or is it, is it next Wednesday? Yeah. And. And. Yeah. So. That's all I have? Why not all quarterly? Yeah. Anything else? I just want to thank staff again. All of those written reports that we have, great work. It was really nice to read about all of the chief, all of the work of the Behavioral Health Unit. And gee, Duke got recertified. And the number of calls and, I mean, 665 in mental health. This is something that the community needs to understand. 665 mental health crisis calls. That's actual to today. And 207 SRU referrals, or CRU referrals. This is a success. But boy, I just see this unit growing.
Absolutely. Yeah. Well, and we'll be adding in Fire EMS is going to join us.
I love the integration of Paramedic Mike Andrews into it. And what has, yeah, it's all the work he has, he has already done in the unit is really amazing. So, thank you. And what people need to know, and because I've looked at all of the calls and crime is down in Burnsville on all categories. And that has been in the last three years, if I went back and looked at all of the reports on all categories. So congratulations, Chief. Yeah. Great work.
Congratulations on a successful fundraiser.
Yes.
The Oktoberfest, that was a great event.
I know.
The food is fantastic.
It was, yeah, it was very good.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Yeah. Yeah. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And Jenny, your people are just doing great work too. And I look at how they are good stewards of people's money. Thank you. Yeah. You know, your call volume is up. BJ's call volume is up in the reports that, in, are you fully staffed now?
We are, as of this week. We just started our.
As of this week?
Academy on Monday. We just started two more police officers and a CSO. So technically, you know, they've got some field training and things like that to get to, but we are technically have our full sworn staff allocation. So it's a great thing.
Yeah. It's good to get there.
And Greg, as I, is, now we have a Safer Grant. Is that going to help BJ get to full staff by next year?
Well, Mayor, Council, yes, we were notified just this last week that we were awarded nine Safer Grant positions in the Fire Department.
Yeah.
That will help us towards the 21 that we've discussed with the Council through the fire standards of cover. We still need to come back to the Council, likely following the presentation of the organizational analysis to talk about what the future of the Fire Department's staffing needs to look like. In terms of their current staffing, they're near full staff. If not full staff, I would have to, I would have to look.
So that's great wins.
That was a big win.
Yeah, a great, yeah. And.
Normal to get that many in one grant.
That was persistent. I think it was the fourth time in, and isn't one again, but that was being persistent and continuously doing that. I also want to, you know, highlight Public Works. You know, they do a lot, and they deliver a lot. 2.4 billion gallons of water was pumped into the city system. I mean, a lot. These are really great reports. If people ever want to take a look at them, it's on the website, and they can read it. So thank you. I just wanted to highlight all of that because that was a lot of great work our Public Works people are doing too, and looking at the stats. So good. I don't have anything else. Do you? Yeah. You? Thank you so much.
With these shirts on, are we considered like Cub Cadet sort of officers?
Cub Cadets, yes, absolutely. I like it.
Just to add to your numbers?
Yes, yes.
We're good, we're good neighborhood watchers.
That's right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's nice to be a Cub again.
Perfect.
Yeah. So thank you, everybody. Great work. And if there's nothing else to come before us, we stand adjourned by acclamation. Thank you, everybody. Thanks.